Okay, welcome to the Board of Trustees of the Stevens Memorial Library meeting, monthly meeting. Calling us to order at 5 o'clock. And I need to read this paragraph. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. GLC 30A 18 and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Board of Library Trustees will be conducted by a remote participation for members of the public. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation. By members of the public and or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. At www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast or Verizon channel. Or online at www.northandovercan't.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately. Access the proceedings in real time by a technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording. Transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. I'm going to do start with a roll call. Mary Deshaun.
Here.
Eva Hummery.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thanks. Stan Lempert.
Here.
Mark Rogers.
Here.
Earl Svensson.
Here.
And myself, Anne Kavanaugh. And then our director Kathleen Keenan.
Here.
Assistant Director Cindy Mazza.
Here.
And Dee Casey. Okay, she's not here. Okay, I did not receive any public comment. To my email. I had a few. Correspondence items. The first was there were two thank you notes. The first was from Dee for the sympathy card and the donation made to Shriners Hospital by us in her father's memory. And the second thank you note was from Marie Taylor for her retirement gifts and card. And I will forward that email to all of you. And that's all I have for correspondence. Oh, one other thing, actually. You have to, we all have to do the ethics training or sign the form on the town website. So just a reminder, did everyone get that? And have you done it yet? I think we're supposed to have done it by now. Yikes. And then, other than that, we can move on to the. Reports. And the first thing is to approval of the January 5th minutes. Does someone want, did everyone get them and have a chance to read them? Or do you need a minute?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so I want to make a motion to accept the minutes, which were very well done.
Minutes for, it's for the special meeting, right?
Yeah, it was a budget review on January 5th.
Yeah, the special meeting on January 5, 2022 as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, oh, I gotta do the roll call. Okay, Mary.
Yes.
Okay, Eva.
I'm gonna abstain because I did not have an opportunity to review the meeting notes and I'm in the car, so I can't do that now.
Stan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Earl?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, Anne, so. Okay. The next thing is the 501(c)(3) update, so that's you, Mary.
So recently, we received an invoice from Hemingway and Barnes for some additional work, additional research work that they were doing. They're still, I think, they seem particularly focused on moving the endowment funds. From the town's bud, you know, budget sheets to. Moving them off of that. So they're doing some research with respect to that. I had replied just saying, I really was hopeful, you know, that we would see some more like corporate related documents. So that at least with a new foundation, we would have an entity that could accept new money. Because I think there's opportunities out there for that. And they, they were able to turn it around fairly quickly after my email. So we have some draft documents. I'll put them into the Google Drive so that folks can look at them. But aside from that, I think even before we sort of like pull the trigger on all of this. I think it might make sense for Brad to have a sit down with folks who are, you know, stakeholders in this. I know Melissa has agreed that she is supportive. Of this endeavor. At the same time, why, you know, maybe just. Sit down with her and perhaps folks from the finance department. And then, in that way, we can sort of like vet the issues a little bit better and see if there are workarounds or things that. Could be done in those beginning phases. That would make the movement a little bit more palatable to everybody. Yeah, I don't know what everybody's thoughts are about that. You know, I certainly didn't want to go out on a limb and have him start calling folks, but.
Yeah, that's, that probably would not be a good idea. I think. I, I think that's a good idea. Mary, I, you know, at some point, we have to have a. A discussion with Melissa and Lynn Savage, the Finance Director specifically. And then just see what they say, you know, just see how that's gonna go. I mean.
Right.
I think.
Good to give them a chance to answer questions.
Yes.
Also contribute to, to, you know, they can maybe set up some early paperwork that will capture the town's concerns. You know, so that.
Yes. Yes, there, I think that the concern would, will be, I'm guessing, but I think the concern will be. When there's this big change on the balance sheet of a million dollars. There's gonna have to be a story to go along with that. I mean, the money is our money, so it's, that's not the issue. The issue is. They have to, they, that really, the Finance Director has to tell the auditors something about where the money went, right? Once it leaves the balance sheet. So I think that's the only issue. And, you know, as, as my guess would be. Since should just as soon not have to do that, should just as soon leave everything the way it is, you know, and not have to address the issue both. I think there's gonna be, if we talk to them. There's gonna be something about the timing of this. It could be either right at the beginning of a fiscal year, you know, like in Ju, in July, for example. So that you can close out one year the way things are and then we do this in 23. You know, whatever they want to do, you know, I think we should be very flexible about that. And it, so it may take some time for this to happen, just because there's timing on their part, you know, to get it. You know, into their books and, you know, let the auditors know what's going on and all this sort of stuff. And, you know, we may have to help them or we may have to come up with whatever the story is we want to, you know, use to justify it. So I think it's a good idea to have that meeting and I think. You know, you, it's just whenever you think the right time is, that would be good. I, you know, things. Go ahead. Sorry.
I was just gonna say, what do you think, I mean, February, I mean, numbers are starting to come down with COVID.
Yeah.
You know, Stan, you could be present there.
Sure. I'll see, I'm going to a meeting, the Finance Committee meeting tonight and the Finance Director is gonna be there. I may ask her this question, but on Thursday, I'm going to a school committee meeting and I know the Town Manager is gonna be there. So I could ask her at that time on Thursday, you know, to explain to her what, what are, you know, what we, what we'd like to try to do. And see what her brothers are about a date. What would be convenient for her. So I could do that on Thursday face to face.
Okay, that's great.
I think that'd be a good idea.
That sounds okay, so. I'd rather approach her first than, than Lynn. Because I don't really have Lynn calibrated well enough to know how she might react. And I just assume not have to start out with a. Negative reaction to this that we didn't have to work out of, so. I think I'd rather start with the Town Manager and let her deal with the Finance Director.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Dee has been in, as the Deputy Town Manager, has been in our meetings and she's certainly been bringing some of this information back to Melissa. So Melissa will already have a pretty good understanding. So when you want to talk about, you know, what's a good date to meet, you don't have to start with the backstory of, you know, why are we doing this or what are we doing it? I think it's a, it's a, it's a quick conversation with Melissa, who will then, you know, figure out a date and she'll get Lynn there.
Well, and I think we have a good, you know, we have. Even a better story now if we're pursuing our mobile library, right? It's a great opportunity to do fundraising. We can do it, you know, start to do fundraising if we have the means to do that. So, and another good reason why becoming a 501(c)(3), the timing's good for that. If that's another project we're gonna be pursuing, because that would be a perfect example of something we could try raising some money for.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so that's my action. I'll do that on Thursday and, and ask her what would be her preference and then I'll let you know what she says.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, I'm more than happy to, you know, attend the meeting. You know.
Yeah, no, no, I think, I think I'm sort of, you know, unless anybody has any other thoughts, I think it would be you and me and Brad and then Melissa and whomever. I assume it would be Lynn and Brad and it could be Dee. I don't know, whoever the Town Manager would want to have on her side in the meeting is fine, but I think.
All right.
Maybe the three of us, does that sound okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So. And I might just mention that to her on Thursday, that it would be the three of us, so she knows who, what's going on.
Okay, that's awesome, thank you, Mary.
Okay.
Okay, I'm next. The. Recognition for Bill Duffy and Maria Messenger. I thought I would just throw a few dates out there to, to get it, the planning really like on track. I was thinking either Sunday, April 10th or Sunday, May 1st, like maybe an afternoon thing right at the library. Of course, I'd have to check with both of them, see if they could make it.
Yeah. And I would tell you right away. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You know, we have all the other stuff to do for that, like the photo book, the town certificate.
So, and, I wanna mention, can I mention that I think it would have to be the May.
Should I send out an email with suggested dates and people can give me their preference or?
Anne?
What do you think?
Anne, can you hear?
First of all, what do you guys think about a Sunday afternoon reception?
Can you hear me, Anne? This is Eva. Can you hear me?
I can't hear anybody.
Okay, Stan, maybe, okay, so let me tell you guys that I think it would have to be May for, because Maria would need to be back up north.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
You can't hear us, maybe.
Yeah, I'll mute.
Interesting. Anyway, yeah, okay, that, that, that makes sense. She's at where, is she in Florida or something?
Yeah, put on closed captioning.
Eva, you're on mute.
Yes, Maria is in Florida, so, yeah, so, okay, so I don't know her exactly.
All right, I can.
But I would tell you that May would be better.
Can you hear us?
Oh, now, can you hear you? Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I put you on the TV, but I'll mute that. All right, so Eva, you were saying you think May would be better for Maria?
Yes.
I mean, I just threw those dates out there too, if she's not back yet, then.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but why do we, why do we pick that May 1st date as a sort of a target date?
Okay.
Start planning, right?
Yeah, so I'll say would this work rather than?
Yeah, yeah, let's, so let's just.
Yeah.
Later than that, then we get into Mother's Day and graduations and all that kind of.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's good. I, I, I encourage you to use that as our planning date.
Okay, and I'm happy to, I'm happy to talk to Maria about it tomorrow, so. All right, if you'd like me to, yeah.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Then the next thing is the board vacancy. Kathleen sent out the packet. And I don't want to discuss. The applicants right now, I just want to. Plan a day that we could do interviews. We have three applicants, so I'm assuming we interview all of them? Do people agree with that?
Yeah. Yes.
So Kathleen and I were talking about dates and our next meeting date is not, is February 22nd, which is during school vacation week. Which may not be good for people and it's also not good for Eva, she has moves every day. So what about doing the week before that for just interviews, hopefully in person? And then, we would do our monthly meeting two weeks later on March 1st. Perhaps virtual, if it, because Kathleen said we can do virtual meetings until the end of March. Because I think those, you know.
Anne, will we be? Will the, will we, will, will we be allowed to have in-person meetings in February?
Well, I mean, I don't know, Kathleen?
That, we're, we're optimistic at the moment, so the Town Manager has been keeping the buildings on skeleton crews. And typically, she checks on Thursday and decides whether we're going to go for another week or not. So as of right now, the skeleton crew, which affects the other buildings more than us, is scheduled to end next Monday, the 31st. The cases are going down and the, one of the advantages to February 15th is it's before the week of school vacation. Which typically is when we're seeing the numbers go back up again.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Vacation.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That, that February 15th might be one of those better dates that, you know, we're in between cycles of other kinds of things.
Yeah.
Well, also, it's three weeks away and if we're only doing interviews. I just, you know, I'm thinking, we want to get moving on this and then if we don't do it then before that week, then we wait till after and then that's five weeks, so.
So, so is that date good with everyone? It's okay with me?
That's Tuesday, February 15th.
Right. In person, right?
Yeah, yes. How much time would you say we? Separate them by half hour? Or 20 minutes?
Oh, oh, yeah, between the, between the interviews?
Much time for each interview? Or should we say half hour and then we have like?
Half hour, half hour for each discussion?
Yeah.
20 minutes in between?
Yeah, 20, 15, 20 minutes we've done in the past, in between.
And then if we can start the next one earlier, we will, so like 5, 5:30 and 6?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I think that sounds good. I think it would be nice to get that filled then for our March meeting or February meeting would actually be on March 1st. And then our March meeting could be four weeks later on the 29th.
Right.
And those, those two could be virtual.
Yeah, when you were discussing the time of the interviews, how long? Will the interview last?
Half hour.
Well, we allow half hour, but maybe each interview is like 20 minutes.
Yeah, what I thought was you wanted some time after each interview to have a discussion. Which is why 20 minutes, it could either go by quick or it could take a while.
A half hour and then 15 minutes in between, maybe?
Well, that, that seems like, that's gonna drag out to be like two hours. I think, what if we do half hour for each person and if we spend the whole time interviewing the whole half hour? Then we just save the discussion till the end when we're done interviewing and then we stay and discuss it.
Yeah, some, I don't know what you guys think about the interview process. Sometimes it's better just to wait till the end. Because. You don't want to. Not taint, but flavor any kind of future discussions, you know?
Right, I agree.
Everybody has their own opinions until the end and then you discuss it together.
Yeah, I think that's right, we're gonna do it.
And that's why I don't think we, if we did 45 minutes, that could like really. Keep us there a long time because it's three times 45 and then we would still need to have discussion, yeah. I think half hour is plenty of time to interview. Each person.
Yeah.
And especially if we have the script and we know who's gonna ask what question, the whole thing moves along quite nicely.
Yes, so that's the other thing, like if everyone looks over the questions and the chart. Let me know, I'll, you know, if you want to add anything or any comment you have.
Could you do me a favor, Anne, and send that out again?
Yes, and we'll add the, I got one, was submitted yesterday, so.
But, but the chart and the questions.
Yeah, that's all in that packet that Kathleen sent.
And the other thing is if there's a particular question that you want to ask, let Anne know that. So like Eva said, if we have it pretty scripted, it moved very smoothly last time.
Yep, Anne, Anne, Anne should be the one who starts the questioning and ends the questioning also.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Good to know.
That's because you're the boss, right?
Yes, because she's the boss, right? So, and, and like Kathleen said, if something resonates with you, one question resonates with you, that's the one you should be asking if at all possible.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it works perfectly because there's five questions in the middle. If Anne does one and seven, you each have, have a question to choose from.
Thank you guys. Like ad libbing in there too, but that's fine. Follow-up questions.
Follow-up questions, yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. Um. All right, that's it for my stuff for now. So Kathleen, you can do your. Update.
That's what I want to talk about. Things are going generally okay. The, the final version of the budget documents were due today at noon time. I believe I have submitted everything that they wanted from me and hopefully they're good representations of what we want. One of the things that we do in the regular budget process is we put in the request for the general fund, for the funding. And then if we want something special, something new, like more staff, we have to write a special request. It's a separate memo document for that. And the same thing if we have some kind of bigger project. So one of the things that Dee had Cindy and I work on this week was a specific project document that requested. The support for a pop-up van. And I am delighted to tell you that this afternoon, I got an email from Melissa. Saying that she was looking at supporting that with ARPA funds. So that's specifically to support the additional staffing. So that's like a really good thing for us. So going into the Select Board meeting and into the Finance Committee meeting, she's already, you know, specified a place where she thought there would be money available to support. This project of getting a van.
Could you share that document with us, Kathleen?
I will, what I can do, we made some updates to the narrative and stuff, so I will send out the new final version that Lynn will be publishing in the, the budget book. So the, the Board of Selectmen will be seeing the budget book on February 7th. And the Finance Committee will be seeing the budget book, so this is the entire town, all departments, that will be seeing the budget book on February 8th. So we don't have long to wait to. Have other people looking at these documents and potentially getting feedback as well. Or getting invited to meetings to come and answer questions. And, you know, in some years, we get invited and some years, they don't have any questions, they are happy with what we've, you know, documented for themselves. But it feels like a very positive process at this stage. In, in, in the response, Cindy and I met last week with Melissa Dee and Lynn Savage, the Finance Director, to answer a few questions. And I think overall, the meeting was supposed to be 30 minutes and only took 20. So I always take these as a good sign. No hard, no hard questions to answer.
There you go. Well, it's, it's certainly of great benefit to us that the town right now is rolling in money, so that's a good thing.
Well, and I think Melissa's intent is, well, to, you know, save some, to also use some for things that really will advance the town.
Right, I think that's true.
It's very nice for us, because we have, we want to help spend some of that money.
Yeah.
Um, the other, the other things, I have not finished the capital improvement request document yet. I, I have to get that finished. It's due February 4th, so I will have a draft of something for you. If not the end of this week, at the very beginning of next week. But we had already discussed and you had voted in the last meeting, what the document basically contained, so. I think that will be all right. We have open positions and Cindy and I, now that we're not going to be rewriting the budget documents over and over again, are gonna try to get back to the interviewing process. And we have some good-looking candidates for some of the positions. We just need to get to the next step of having those interviews and hopefully reference checks and hiring people.
Kathleen, a question, do you mean CPA submission?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the Community Preservation, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
So we're not doing any CIP thing per se?
We already submitted that for back in October and that was the public bathroom project that, again, looks like it's getting support from town management.
Okay.
So it might be a year when we do very well with other sources of funds.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Yeah, just like you said, things in general are going along, so. We are working with the North Parish. Church has a racial justice group. And this year, they've really had a major push on to recognize Black History Month, particularly relating it to people in North Andover and Massachusetts. They have a project where they have commissioned banners. So right now, we have a banner for the 375th for the library, for instance, downtown. They've commissioned the same type of banner, recognizing eight black history figures. And they will be. And they will be hung in different locations around the town. One of them will be featured here at the library. The group is talking about having a walking tour to invite people to walk between banners and at each place learn more different things. This banner project is being supported by Melissa Rodriguez and by Dee Casey. So it was easy for me to sign on and say the library will be supporting it as well. So in the next, I would say probably the next week you'll start hearing more about the Black History Month celebration and recognition here in North Andover. They've got a number of people participating, people from Rolling Ridge, the North Parish Church, the Commission on Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, the Merrimack Valley Black and Brown Voices, and I think there are a number of other groups in there as well. So it'll be interesting to see it all pulled together. But it was very nice once again to be asked to participate in this kind of a project that brings a lot of town organizations together.
That's nice. I like that. Will there be some sort of PAM PR stuff that tells you where they all are, all the locations?
We, it's getting, getting support from town management. Sarah Brush is in the process of creating an interactive map that you'll be able to click on your cute little raindrop on a Google map and it will tell you the building. It'll tell you which historical figure is, is being featured there. It will have a biography of the person. So there'll be a lot that you can do just virtually by going to the website without even doing the walking tour. Hello, Eva. So I think that's, that's it for me, Anne.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, treasurer report earlier up.
Well, it's been an interesting month, has it not? So after my.
Our balance.
Well, I'll get to that. I'm running through the, the pages of the report. So right after the title page is the account balance graph. And you'll notice that in January, our balance is down. That's all due to the stock market primarily. I checked today. So on the account balances, and I'm trying to go with the fiscal year starting on June thirtieth or July first. When I put this report together on Friday, our total was nine fifty-nine and the, the big difference today, it really isn't that big, is the nine forty-nine from Fidelity. When I checked earlier, it's nine forty-eight five, but the final numbers don't really come in till six thirty. So market is down today. So my, my comment here is, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about the balance of the accounts, stock versus bond. And I think the next couple of months are going to be a test to, you know, are we going to stick with that plan or not? So my next one is the asset allocation. I don't know if Mark is going to talk more about this, but essentially at the moment, we're, we're roughly at seventy thirty according to this report, seventy percent stocks and thirty percent bonds and cash. Now, the other thing is to be careful of is the interest rate. There are two big things, I think, going on in the market that's causing this up and down business. One is the Fed has announced it's going to change the interest rate. And if it raises the interest rate, it's not too favorable for stocks. And if it also raises the interest rate, the, you know, the price of bonds go down. So hang on for the ride, I think, is probably the way to say it. So the details of our asset allocation is on the next page. And then I presented, I usually present the checking register by date, which I still do, but I also kind of opened up the itemized categories to show all the spending we're doing in each category. So that's on the, the end page, the last page. So that may be more, I don't know, more meaningful to some people, I would think.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, to see. So any questions on the report itself? Then I had like two questions of my own.
I, I have on the check register.
Yeah.
Um, there's a, an expense for the architect. Was that for the bathrooms?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, that was for the public bathrooms.
So that was the design work that they did for the bathrooms?
Yes.
Yep. You're talking about La Grasse.
Yeah.
Watson.
Yeah, La Grasse, Yonohitson, Yale. Yes. And then the two invoices we've already paid to Hemingway and Barnes. Mary, you said we had gotten a third bill from them, a third invoice?
We did, comparable to the, the first two.
Okay. So we still have another two. Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's. Still have another three thousand dollars or some amount like that.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Now, I, I, just while, while we're talking about this, what, what has Brad said about the, the actual five oh one C three process itself? Is he, are we doing, who's, what's going on with that?
So they furnished to us the corporate documents that would, so it has the articles of incorporation, bylaws, all that other stuff.
Okay.
Request for an EIN.
Yeah.
So we have, I can certainly put those in the Google Drive and folks can access them.
Okay. And then do we have to apply for the five oh one C three ourselves or is he going to do it for us or?
He does all the, I, my understanding is they do all the legwork on that.
Okay, okay. So once we approve the documents that he sent us, then they'll take the next step, whatever that is.
So I mean, I, I think our next step is perhaps a conversation with the town, just so that if the documents need to get revised in any way, we can do that now as opposed to amending them down the road.
Okay.
So if, if we have a sit down sometime in February, then you can have him just.
Will Brad also help us cancel the EIN that we already got?
So. Either he can do that or, or, or one of us can do that, I suspect. But that's definitely on, on the radar to get done.
Okay. All right. Okay, sorry, sorry. That was kind of off.
No, so you, you asked, part of my, my first question was, Mary, Kathleen had said there was another invoice from the lawyers. And have you, that you were looking at, I believe? Is that? Is that ready to be paid or we're going to wait?
That can be paid.
Okay, and?
I want to get a, yeah.
Are there going to be others?
Yeah.
Okay.
So my email to Brad was basically, you know, we've gotten three invoices. I thought that we would see some corporate documents before now. And I said, we're bumping up against, you know, what was budgeted for this project. So he explained that they're still trying to figure out how to, you know, what, you know, laws govern and, and how to move those existing funds over. We need to have a conversation though with the town.
Yeah.
I think right now we're intellectualizing it and I don't think that's practical. I think we really need to get feedback from folks that have a genuine interest. And, and then we need to move forward with either workarounds or whatever they think will, you know, will get this over the finish line.
Well, I agree with you. By the way, my question was more, you know, right now our balance in the checking account is about ten thousand, I think. And Mark's got certain cash in the investment. So I just wanted to make sure we were, you know, we kind of complained ahead.
Um, the other thing I would say too, Mary, is that with this third invoice, we've now probably spent more money than we actually voted. Right?
Now, we voted for between nine and twelve, but then, yeah, but that if, if and when that, you know, that fourth invoice comes in, we're at the outer limits of what we voted. So we will need to address this.
Yep.
So my, my other.
Know it's money that's being invested that we will get a return on, you know? But at the same time, we really need to, we, you know, I'm trying to manage this as well as possible.
No, I, yeah, no, you're doing that.
You just don't want it to linger. You know, these are.
Right, right. Yeah.
No, I, I saw, I liked that email to them. It was, you know, you got your point across.
So my other observation, I don't know if everybody read it. There was an article in the Eagle Tribune about the Andover Youth Center. And it, I saw a lot of parallels to what we do. In other words, people, in the Andover case, people donated money to a nonprofit organization who then cut checks to employees. And so I just, and I had asked Mary to kind of, you know, just to see.
No, I, I think there's a lot of merit to perhaps not, you know, in terms of timing, I don't think now is the best time to do it, but to either get an opinion from the State Ethics Board or to see how they react to this Andover matter. Andover is, is just one of those cases. It's so egregious. But at the same time, it's just, you want to be toeing the line with respect to conflicts of interest and, you know, laws that actually govern state employees and their acceptance of, of gifts. So I mean, there's clear understanding those gifts can exceed fifty dollars, but I think there are carve-outs for if, if they go to educational programs or things like that. But I think for you, Earl, you know, having some sort of documentation as to what is and isn't acceptable would be, I think it would probably be good so that you can sleep nights.
Well, I can sleep nights. I don't, I don't think we're, we're crossing any boundaries. However, you know, my, it was more just to make sure we're toeing the line, you know, and not crossing that line. If there were some things we ought to keep in mind.
Are, Earl, are there any specific examples of things you think that might be in a gray area about?
Um, no, I, I just, you know, when you think about it, we write checks to employees. And in, in some cases, we write checks to ourselves in some cases. And so I think we just got to be careful, you know, that we get the right, you know, the doc, as, as Mary said, get the documentation as to why. And I.
Is.
It was more along those lines than, than anything else.
The thing I would, I would, I guess my question would be particularly when we write checks to ourselves, those are reimbursements for expenses for which there should be receipts.
Correct. Yeah, that's my, that's what I said.
And, and the same is true about employees. So when Kathleen or Cindy sign up for something, there's some paperwork that says they got a membership to the ALA or whatever it was.
Yeah.
You know, it's documented. So it's not like it's going into their salary. It's a, you know, reimbursable expense that we're funding as part of their job that we want to encourage them to do. So in my mind, I don't, there's nothing that I know of that would fall outside the realm of doing the right thing, doing the legal thing. So, but if there is.
I remind you, Stan, I, I said, I don't think we're going over that line.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's more, I just want to make sure we, we have the practices and, you know, if there were any issues of conflict, we.
Yeah.
We deal with them.
Yeah.
So I think.
Did you read the article, by the way? Stan?
Yeah, it was.
I, I read, yes.
Okay. You know, it just struck me when I read it, there was just so many similarities to
I agree.
what we do.
Well, but the, the difference between what happened in the Andover case and what anything we're doing is it went straight to people's salaries. Right?
Well, I don't, I don't know that it did, you know, I don't know that it was reported as, on their.
That's, that's, that's what, yeah, well, I don't know about that either, but.
Okay.
You know, the way it's in, in the paper is that, you know, they got effectively bonuses of large amounts of money, which look like salary, right? So that's a whole different thing.
Well, I would, I think they were classified as gifts. So that's why, you know, I think that's. Anyway.
Right, well, you, yeah. You had a foundation that was set up with the express purpose of rewarding town employees for going, what they described as above and beyond the call of duty. So I mean, that is expressly the mission of the foundation. You know, and I guess that really, you know, it calls into question, you know, you know, could this foundation have a mission statement that isn't aligned with Massachusetts law as it relates to state employees?
Yeah, I think of the Duchesne money, you know.
Yeah.
One, one way to look at it. And again, I, you know, I don't think there's anything.
No.
You know, untoward or whatever the word is, but I just think, given what, what occurred in Andover, and Mary's got a good point. I mean, we ought to kind of wait to see what the, the Ethics Board is doing because I think that was the, one of the recommendations of the lawyers that did the investigation said is go get go get a ruling from the Ethics Commission.
Exactly.
Yeah, and by the way. When I, when I take the ethics test, I mean, there are just so many ins and outs and loopholes. I don't know how anybody can clearly understand what, what is and what isn't. Which is why they suggest you call them. I didn't mean to make a big deal of that. I just wanted every, you know, I think something we ought to be aware of and going forward.
Yeah, I, no, I, I, I hear that. On the other hand, by, by raising the, the issue, almost by implication, it means that there may be a problem, right? That's, it's hard to, sort of, it's the human reaction to that, right? Just saying, so. I don't think there is, I don't think there's a problem either, but you know, it's worth asking the question.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, committee reports. Mark, investment?
The next balancing, well, we didn't, we didn't buy, by the way, we didn't buy any, we didn't make a buy. We just did a sell because we were going to spend, I think, essentially the money that we, we sold. So it's waiting, there's another fourteen thousand in the demand account because we'll have future bills to pay. And at this point, it's making a better return than the S and P five hundred. So I might as well leave it there. But, but anyway, our next rebalancing will take place in a quarter at the end of March. And that's really it. We, you know, the, Earl talked about the new balance. He's quite right. It's around nine hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Well, it's not terrible. So.
It's still considerably up from where it was at the beginning of last year.
Glad you like, freed up, you, you sold when you did. That was good timing, at least.
Yep.
Okay, I'm up next with long range planning. Um, I, we really need to jump into our next strategic plan and I am going to be emailing all of you homework. Um, not too difficult, but basically the first thing will be to think about people we can put on our community focus group. And I have a list of different organizations that we could pull from. You know, we want to get a nice diverse.
You know, we want to get a nice diverse demographic group and all of that. So if I could get names from some people, of people, you know, that you think could be good for this, it'd just be one or two meetings at the library, I'm thinking maybe in the evening, and-
How many names for each of us are you looking for?
Maybe like four or five.
From each of them?
I mean, just suggestions, and then we can like follow up and, you know, ask or invite these people or see if they'd be willing. And we may have overlap, you know? I mean, you could even do three to five. I think I have five lines. And then the other thing will be, one thing is to look at library trends, and I have a few links to websites that the MLS person, is it MLS Kathleen or M L A, MLS, Michelle, sent to us. And so you can basically look at, I'll send you the link and you just click on it and you look at the different library trends and just, I just want feedback about what you think are, you know, would be important to us. Just to get you thinking about things, that's all.
And for the focus groups, are we gonna have like, what, a list of questions we'd like them to answer, address?
Well, we can get Michelle to come and, or to do it by Zoom? I'd rather do it in person, but she, she will run the first meeting for us. Or a meeting for us, you know, and it's basically the sore activity, is that correct, Kathleen, do you know, I think? And, you know, she does them all the time. So Kathleen suggested we put two dates out there and maybe have two meetings and do similar things and have her run the first one, and then we can kind of copy it for the second. You know, we're looking for different ages, organizations in town, maybe Melissa D., school parents, you know, a diverse group, so we get input from a lot of different places. I'll, I'll, I'll tell you more about it in the email. I just thought it'd be easier than trying to discuss it all now. And I will also put some dates out there for the first couple. And of course, all of us should try to participate in these meetings too. But maybe we could split up the two, if we had to. And I'm thinking evening is better than the Saturday. What do you all think?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
And probably not Tuesday, because the town does a lot of meetings on Tuesday, don't they? Or what nights are big for town meetings, Stan?
Well, let's see, the Board of Selectmen is Monday, Finance Committee is Tuesday.
Planning Board is Tuesday.
Wednesday is often a better night than, than Monday, Tuesday or Thursday, so.
That's what I was, yeah.
The other part, you know, the other thing to, to think about though is, I don't know what others think about this, but Friday night is often an open night, right, for people, right? So that's another possibility, it's, you know, usually, usually is never, there's never a conflict with the town meeting, so that's always, you know, makes that easy. You can think about it.
Okay, I would say no, but I, I'm willing to hear everybody's argument for that, I just, yeah. I think people, well, we'll see, maybe. And so there's that, and then it's the library trends and I will put in information there also, we need to do an environmental scan. Oops, ignore that, and the demographics, so I'm kind of summarizing those things.
What's an environmental scan again, remind me?
Is, I have that in the spiral over here. It's basically this, let's see, where is it? It's just basically how things are, like currently.
Okay.
And I'll tell you more about it later.
That's fine.
Yes. So that is pretty much what I have for the strategic planning, because basically what happens is you have the focus group meetings and then we, and then there will also be a meeting for the staff to gather all these ideas of what we think we want to look for, and then we'll come up with a survey for, a general survey, very simple, for the community. And then it's from all that input that we write up our goals. And also, we don't have to do all these action items anymore for the long-range plan. Or strategic plan. Is the, the name of it, so. So we really do need to get it going. Anyways, I will send that out to all of you pretty soon. And that is pretty much what I have for that. And so we'll move on to Eva for the Building Committee Furniture Update.
So Ann and I have had some very productive Sunday afternoon, was it Sunday afternoon, Ann? Multiple Sunday afternoons, looking at websites, talking about different furniture. To remind you, sorry, I have a dog playing with a squeaker toy in the background. What, to remind you, what was causing a problem for us was trying to reconcile our current style of furniture in the building with what options there are out there to make a change, to bring us into current furniture and what it should look like, what we can do to refresh the building while still in keeping with what people know and love about what we have today. So Ann and I have been looking at things, we think we found two companies that we really like. Options for new tables and chairs that give us more flexibility. We have reached out to C O P, they have just recently gotten back to us. And both, fortunately, both companies are companies that they work with, which means in terms of procurement, we can go through the state contract. They're on the state contract, so it just makes procurement a little simpler for us. There are also, that also means the pricing is more fixed at a more reasonable cost because it's vetted by the state contract already. So we are moving along nicely, and I would imagine next month, Ann, we'll be able to provide some, some real concrete options. Now, Kathleen and Cindy haven't been part of our Sunday afternoon discussions, so of course, we want them to vet what we're looking at before we present to you. So that, that will be an important factor. We're not going to go down the road completely without their approval. So, so, but we're, we're cautiously optimistic, right, Ann?
Yes, and by the way, they, Jen is going to be sending some samples and things to the library.
Right.
Yeah, so, you know, with, to my attention, so let me know on that.
Do you have any pictures of furniture you could share with us?
We do, but again, we haven't feted it with Kathleen and Cindy yet, so.
Also, there's a lot of options, and that's what we, that's what we're waiting on, like, for like colors and-
Yes, of course, we want, we need, there's so much wood in our, in our building that we need to find the right thing so that all goes very nice and cohesively together.
I would suggest out loud-
Yeah.
That you, that we, they only bring no more than three options to us.
Right.
That's about what we're down to.
I guarantee you, I, we'll get confused for any more than that. So, yeah, I just-
There aren't many.
Yeah, I, I'd add Eva that, the, the three, I, I'm going to speak way out of, out of turn here for the three men on the, on the trustees. We're, we have a very simple view of this, just tell us what you want and we'll agree, it's like, that-
If you say, yeah, that looks good.
The whole is perfect, whatever.
At least Stan had the courage to say that out loud.
Well, certainly, you guys should know, everyone should know, what we're looking to do is buy something that is of very good quality, that will last 50 years. And we're not going to look for something trendy that in 10 years or 20 years, they'll say, oh yeah, that was purchased in the 2020s. Yeah, it's out of date now, we know when it was purchased, we want it to be timeless.
Yeah, I, I agree with everything you said. My only criteria for part of the furniture issue is the comfortable chairs, that's it. I don't care what color they are, I don't care what shape they are, I don't care anything about that, as long as they're comfortable. And many of the chairs we have are not that comfortable, you know, they're wooden chairs, they're hard. You can't sit in them very long, so that's all I would say, that's my only, only criterion I would apply.
We agree, and you know what, sadly, one of our favorites that we looked at is a wooden chair. It has a, it, but it has options. Well, we saw something that had an upholstered seat and an upholstered back, and it's shown with the table we loved, and we said, we want that chair. Well, the manufacturer doesn't make that chair, so now we have to research.
I think they got rid of it.
They got rid of it, yeah.
Or something.
So, you know, but we, we, we've got our eye on what we, where you're thinking we need, so, yes.
She gave us other similar options.
Yeah, so stay tuned.
Okay.
Okay, so we are happily-
About the, the comfort thing.
Right, and we're making forward progress, that's what you wanted to hear, right?
That's exactly right.
Yes, so, okay, that's, that's the update on that. I will defer to Kathleen on the other building-related updates. If there are, you know, she's already talked about, I think, because I was in the car, the fact that, you know, we submitted for the bathroom on the C I P, et cetera, so, Kathleen?
Yeah, I don't think there's any really big topics with the building at the moment. We're, you know, trying to get the preventative maintenance, that, you know, routine stuff, just getting it done. It's been a little bit tricky because, you know, some of the companies come in, so for instance, to change the air filters, they're waiting 11 weeks for the air filters to show up. So we've all heard the expression supply chain, and I'm hearing that in connection with some of the things that we're doing. But again, I think Jen, things are going along generally okay, as, you know, most of the other things are with the, the building right now. We have a steady stream of people, but not a huge number of people at any one time, which, you know, may help make it be a bit easier here as well, so. So we're not, we're not overloading or straining, you know, things like the bathrooms at the moment, so that's good. Some are sitting in.
It sounds good, okay. I just found the environmental scan. Basically, the trend, current trends. And you can find out about those, like the link I'm going to send you, looking at other library strategic plans, like ones that just came out. Our library statistics, like where are we at? And history and whatnot. So, um, the action item list, I think we pretty much covered it all already, from what I can see. Community, oh, the community preservation, you already went over that, Kathleen, right? That's going to be ready soon?
Yeah, that should be done by early next week. And I just realized that the community preservation application in some ways is the same, we have, we have old business twice, so.
I just was seeing that, so old business or new business?
Yes.
So new business is number six, right?
Yes, new business is number six. How many people proofread this document and all of us still don't see it says old business due to time?
I just noticed it when you said it, I'm like, wait a minute, old business, old business.
I know, so actually, six B is the same as five B, so you can already cross that one off. Which means we can let Stan talk about the Bradstreet recognition.
Very quickly, very quickly. I, I have had some discussions with Karen Klein, Michael Smolak, Mark Boer, who is our town poet laureate, and Kathy Stevens, who formed a, Karen calls it the gang of five, but I'd like to not be that associated with the gang, so. A gang of four plus me. And in one of the discussions, so, the original idea was they were going to have a statue of Anne Bradstreet and put it on the library lawn, that was the deal, right? With a bench next to it, so people could sit and read and-
And take lectures.
And, but yeah, or do something, right? And I told them emphatically that I would in no way support a statue of Anne Bradstreet since we don't know what Anne Bradstreet looked like. So if they wanted to do that, I would not support that project. And just to let them know right up front, and so they were all like, well, you know, that's kind of, they thought that was, I don't know, not so helpful. Then it turned out that then I, that pushed them in a different direction, so now the latest thinking is a bench, a granite bench with several, and I don't know what that means, stat, small, smaller statues of generic children, you know, with books or some such thing, right? And plaque or plaques describing Anne Bradstreet, who she was and her contribution to stuff. So that's the, sort of the current thinking of this group about what they now might want to do. The two locations that they've been thinking about, one is in fact the library lawn, and the other is a school, but not the Anne Bradstreet Early Childhood Center, which already has its own market. So maybe something in front of the middle school, whatever. I explained to them that we were in the process of doing the, the landscaping around the library, and so that would be, there would be some time for that project to start to unfold, and so it would probably be at least a year or maybe more before we would be in a position to say, okay, here's what the landscaping's going to look like, and have that discussion about, do we want to put a monument on the lawn, and so where would it go? So there, they've been a price of that, and I did that to try to hold them off so they wouldn't think that they could do something in the next, you know, 60 days or something, so. So anyway, so that's it. I think the situation is that it, it's fairly likely that nothing will come of this because they'll have to raise the money for this project. And if they want to do real sculpture, bronze sculpture, that's going to be very expensive. So they're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars in funds they have to raise. This is a project that specifically the CPC will not support. So they won't be able to use any sort of town funds for this, so they're kind of on their own to, to figure out where the money is going to come from. So as a result of that, I think, you know, we're not, there's no big rush to have to deal with this. Personally, I don't think, you know, I, I think I would consider some tasteful and reasonable thing, monument on the lawn at that, at the library. I, I don't think that's a completely unreasonable idea, but, you know, there's a lot that would have to be done and discussed before we got to that point. So anyway, that's my report.
Okay, but we also talked about, Stan, have you talked to them since we talked? We had our meeting last week talking about this meeting, and we said, how about like a story walk, poetry type thing?
I have not talked to them about that. So I, yeah, I have not broached that idea.
That was another idea that I think Kathleen liked. Does everyone know what a story walk is? No, it's a, you have like, how many posts would you say, Kathleen?
It, 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 it varies, I can send a link so you can see pictures of them. It's, it's an outdoor installation, it's a, if you do it right, it's a permanent installation, it's a closed- It's, it's an outdoor installation. It's a, if you do it right, it's a permanent installation. It's a closed case where you put in pages from a book, and then you, as you walk along the path, you go from first page to the second, third, and fourth, and so forth. Several libraries have done this. It might be a nice way to, we, we thought this might be a way to divert them from a statue, which is nice, but doesn't really do much of anything. Whereas a story walk installation, there's an activity involved that takes people outdoors. And with the, the permanent installation of the right kind of case, you, you update the stories over time.
I believe there's one at the Stevens Coolidge Estate.
They, they have, they do have one. I think theirs was done in wood. It was done, done as a project, I think, actually, maybe by an, either an Eagle Scout or.
Yeah.
So, and people have done them in varying degrees of material. So wooden ones that, you know, age but don't last forever versus the the really premium ones, there are companies who now specialize in making the, the metal post and the cases and things like this. So they get expensive, but they're not as expensive as statues and benches, for instance. But it has the potential, I think, to appeal to Karen Klein, for instance, to think that, you know, we're putting stories out there for people to enjoy.
Yeah, it's like an activity, and they, we, they could do poetry some of the time, maybe for Poetry Month. What month is that?
April. You know, one, one of the things that makes me nervous, because I think of what, what's happened in the past is saying yes to a bench or something like that opens the door, it sets another precedent. And then we get other people approaching us. But if we did something like this story walk installation, and what comes to mind are the ducklings at the, at the Common in Boston. You know, if it was something like that, that's a very unusual and different thing. So then if, in the future, people came to us, we could say that was a one-off. You know, we have a leg to stand on as far as that goes. So, you know, this might be a creative, a nice creative solution that won't get us in hot water in the future.
Right, yeah. Anyways, just think about it.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll send that idea to them, and I'll let you know what they say. I think it's a good idea. I, you know, not only could they do a variety of, of for example, a variety of poetry, it wouldn't just have to be Ann, right? It could be anybody. It could be, you know, well, it could be Mark. I mean, Mark writes poetry. He can put his own poetry in there.
Well, and it could also be stories, you know, kids' stories some of the time. It would be a really worthwhile thing to have, rather than just a statue that's going to be really expensive that, you know.
And it, and it could be very month dependent. For example, in, in April, there would be poems in, at the holidays, a holiday story. You know, around Halloween, something related to that. So, you know, it, that could allow for a lot of creativity and a thematic kind of rotating.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know?
We could work it into our new landscaping. And parking area. No, I'm just kidding. Um, by the way, Anne Brad, Anne is, has an E on it. I'm like, my Anne. Anne Bradstreet is Anne and E.
I missed her E, huh?
It's tricky. Just to have the minutes correct.
Yes.
Okay, well, that.
I'm done.
Okay, so that's it. And accept our next meeting dates. So we're looking at potentially Tuesday, February fifteenth for the interviews. Tuesday, March first for the February, technically February meeting, and then Tuesday, March twenty ninth.
Right.
I mean, we could potentially do the week before that, but whereas we're probably going to be doing a focus group sometime in March, you know, it might be good to push it out to the twenty ninth.
That all sounds good.
Okay. So motion to adjourn. Anything else from anybody?
Nope.
No? Okay, so.
I adjourned, I make the motion to adjourn at six fourteen P M.
Is, is that your doggy snoring?
Um, this is, that's her dog snoring. This is my dog who has an inhaler now.
And two dogs snoring.
That's why I had to pick her up. She was having trouble.
See?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call. Okay, Mary? Uh, yes. Uh, Eva?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Earl?
Uh, yes, but do the dogs get to vote?
No.
No, no, they're the public.
They're also kind of deaf, so. Yeah, so she shouldn't even.
We could be, we could have public comment from dogs.
Public comment, squeakers and barks. Ooh.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
I want more treats. Okay, and myself, Ann? Yes.
All right.
Well, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Okay, good night.